Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the library. Those of you who are here in person and welcome to those who are listening on Zoom and participating that way, and also those who are listening on two radio stations that are carrying this tonight, KOPN and also KFRU. Officially, I want to say the League of Women Voters welcome you to tonight's in-person and Zoom candidate forum. My name is David Lyle. I'll be the moderator tonight. We have candidates and races for the mayor and also for Ward Three and also for Ward Four. We are less than two weeks away from the election. It was two weeks ago yesterday, and I think that I know probably at least eight people who are going to be on the front desk today that are really happy that it's only two weeks away. I want to thank Lauren Williams and others from the Columbia Public Library for hosting this hybrid forum. The forum is being aired live on the radio stations. And again, we do have, I heard somebody say just a moment ago, 70 people signed up on Zoom. Each candidate is going to have a two-minute introduction, and then when we get to the questions, they each have 60 seconds to answer the questions. Those of you who are here in person, when you came and took a seat, you saw a little notepad, an index card there. Hopefully, you'll have a pen or pencil or something to write on. And please, if you have, there are pens back there by the back door, and they can bring those to you, one of the league members, and then they will bring those questions to me. So again, we have about 25 minutes with the two Ward Four candidates to start us tonight, and then we'll go, I believe, to the two Ward Three candidates for another 25 minutes, and then we'll wrap up with the mayor candidates. At least, that's what the plan is right now. Again, we have two wards where we will be electing representatives from those wards. There are six wards total. We have candidates for Ward Four, Erica Pefferman and Nick Foster. We'll start with each candidate with their two-minute opening statements, and then we'll move to the questions. And then when we're done with the questions, each of them will have a one-minute closing statement opportunity. And again, don't forget to get your questions in early. Oh, 10 seconds to me. I better, again, I thought you were telling me I better wrap up this intro. You will be watching, you'll be watching.
Yeah.
Carol there for the, for the little sign. So Erica Pefferman, welcome to the program tonight, and we'll take your opening statement.
Great. Thank you for having us. I really appreciate it. We've had a lot of opportunities to, to be on tour together, is kind of how I refer to some of my friends through this process. My name is Erica Pefferman. I am running for City Council for Ward Four. I am a mom of five, single mom of five kids that are 23 to 14 years old, which most people consider to be the most surprising thing about me. I also own a business, the two businesses here in town, Columbia Marketing Group and Como Magazine. I am a very active member of the chamber. A lot of people have asked me why I've decided to run for City Council, and it was very much inspired by trips I've been on for the last seven years as a part of a delegation through the chamber. We've visited other cities that are very like us. They include Fort Collins, Ann Arbor, Tuscaloosa, Knoxville, Gainesville, I'm missing one or two, I'm sure. And the purpose of these trips was to look at what is working for other cities that are like us or like we want to be. And they address, we've addressed topics like affordable housing, workforce development, innovation, infrastructure, airports, trash, everything. So we would go and learn really great things, and then we would come back, and we would always find some way for those, those ideas, the great ideas of collaboration to die in city council chambers. So that's why I decided to get involved. I'm really passionate about Columbia, and I love, I have the awesome privilege to get to write about Columbia every single month about the amazing people here. I am endorsed by the Police Officers Union and the Firefighters Unions, and I also bring to the 17 years of experience working in a board, both governing and advisory roles. And a governing board is the board's job to help protect the organization, run the vision, and guide the, the actions of the executive director. And the city council operates the same way. Our job will be to protect the city, make the best decisions for the city, and guide the actions of the city manager. I've been doing that for 17 years. So that's me. Here's Nick.
Nick Foster, welcome to you and your two-minute opening comments.
Okay, thanks so much, David, and thanks to the league. I'm a big fan of the League of Women Voters. I think that you do incredible work and very important work at all times, but maybe especially during this time in our nation's history. I came to the decision to run for office because I first learned that Ian Thomas, who has said that he would cast his vote for me, determined that he wouldn't run, and I heard from others who said, Nick, we think you should run. I talked with a number of other people and came to the conclusion after about 10 days that it was what I was going to do. I've lived here since 2010. We came here when my wife took position at the zoo in the College of Education and Human Development, and I looked for an opportunity to work in nonprofits as I had previous, most previously. I've been the executive director of Habitat Humanity in Morgan County, Indiana, before coming here, and was the executive director of Alabama Poverty Project in Alabama before that. So I eventually ended up at Voluntary Action Center as the executive director following Cindy Mustard. I was in that position for over nine years, and in that position, I really got to know the city well. Because facts provide services in so many different areas, it put me in touch with a lot of the resources and the folks in the community who make an effort to, to address those needs that are in the community. That meant that I was in touch not only with the nonprofit community, but the for-profit business community as well, education, the government itself, the churches and individuals and service groups. And I feel that like because of that, I really came to know the city well. I'm married. My wife and I have a daughter who goes to school right across the street, and I have two grown sons. I think that we're at a turning point in our city's history, and I think that it is a time, is a time when visionary leadership needs to step up and dream big and invite all of the city to dream with us.
All right, thank you. And again, I would encourage those who are following our forum on Zoom to get their questions in, and also those who are here in person. A couple of questions from the league, though, that I'll start with today, and we'll start with Erica first in answering this. How will you ensure follow-through of the city council decisions by the city manager of those decisions?
Well, I think this is a great question and something we've been talking a lot about. It's really disappointing to see the citizens of Columbia vote on issues that get passed, and the city council makes a decision. I don't, you know, I don't think it's actually the city manager that is primarily not, not doing as directed at this time. Seems to be city council not doing as, as the city has asked them to do. So when you see infrastructure projects that are passed by the city, they are funded, agreed to be funded, we are, rates go up, and then those things are put on pause and not done. That is something the city council absolutely has to, to be behind all on one page, have a healthy organizational collaborative spirit about it, and then direct the city, city manager to do so. The only way you can do that is you have to have a healthy team dynamic. There is not a healthy team dynamic right now. There's a lot of infighting. There's a lot of political grandstanding, and what happens is the needs of the citizens are put second. So I would ensure that I would do my part as someone who's super geeky about organizational health to make sure that, that I don't contribute to that, and I really help bring the team together so there's more of a unified front.
All right, thank you. Nick Foster, the same. How will you ensure follow-through of the city council decisions by the city manager of those decisions?
Going to be sure about how much time I have. One minute. One minute, okay, great. Well, I've been the executive director of three different nonprofits, and in each one of those circumstances, I've had a wonderful relationship with the board of directors, which, which I've sought to lead and follow at the same time. The format of the, or the direction of this city council is pretty much the same in that the council provides policy and then directs the staff through the city manager to follow through on that policy. I think that really it's just a matter of listening carefully to reports and then interacting carefully with not only the city manager, but the staff who carries that out, and then listening back to hear what the feedback is from the staff and from the city manager about how we best move forward. The truth is that the city staff is in there every day, single, every single day, the city manager is doing the same thing, and so they're closest to the ground as to, as to what needs to happen. But it's just a matter of reporting back, I think, and being sure there's clarity about what's being heard and what's being expected.
This is another question from the league, and we'll start with Nick on this one. What are the unique characteristics of the fourth ward, and how will those be reflected in your priorities?
The fourth ward is a very interesting ward. It is, it is right now the, the least populated ward in the city. They'll change with redistricting. It's largely residential. There is some business in the fourth ward, and it's a very active ward. If you do a survey of the city and ask for input, input by survey at least, and in other venues too, about what needs to happen in the city, you're going to see a lot of activity in the fourth ward. And so it's a very connected ward and a very active ward. It also, for the most part, is pretty well-to-do, frankly. And in that regard, I think still has a very strong sense of things that need to be done for people in the community who perhaps are not as, as well situated as they are, or as privileged as they are, and who want to see things change in the city for everyone in the city. So very active and also very socially conscious.
All right, we'll go to Erica Pefferman for the same question, what are the unique characteristics of the fourth ward, and how will those be reflected in your priorities?
The fourth ward is an absolute beautiful, beautiful place to live. I feel very blessed to be able to live there, especially as I'm driving around, you know, talking, canvassing, talking to my neighbors, putting signs up, and just absolutely always odd by another neighborhood that I go into. I will say that, as, as Nick had mentioned, the fourth ward is extremely active. They're the highest voting turnout ward in the entire city, and they're very engaged. Every time I go to city council meeting and listen, you can always bet, there are several people up at the podium that are going to speak from the fourth ward. So I'm very proud of them for that, and I think that that is something that is really pretty unique about our ward. It is an affluent ward. It is almost entirely residential. There's only a few commercial spots within our ward, and I look forward to representing them as our next city council person.
First of all, are these two together or are these separate? I'm going to go to questions that were perhaps handed in by some of the audience members, and we'll start with Erica for this one. Do you have a passion for a particular project for Columbia in your role as a council person?
Yeah, I think you're the first person, when I was on the air, that told me, like, you asked what I was, what my platform was going to be. I was on the air for Alzheimer's, I'm the chair of the Alzheimer's Walk, and I'm the board for Alzheimer's. And I remember saying, that's silly for someone to join the chain, the, the city council and have like one or two passion projects, because they're going to be really disappointed when they have to make hundreds of decisions about things that they're absolutely probably not passionate about. However, with that being said, I am passionate about several things, and affordable housing is at the top of that list. I am extremely passionate about making sure that there are places for people to live in our city, not, not only at the low-income level, but at all levels. We have a housing crisis in our city, and there are 1,200 people right now on the Section Eight waiting list with no place to put them. People in our city tend to feel anti-development, anti-build, but the challenge is we have to build inventory so that we have places for people to live, and especially at the, the level that is of the lowest, the lowest income levels.
All right, Nick Foster, you're, do you have a passion for a particular project for Columbia that you would carry into your role as a council person?
Well, I agree that there are a lot of things that we need to care about, and, and there are a number of things I do care about. I do have several priorities that are at the top of my list, and I've said that from the beginning of the campaign. Climate change is one of those, public safety is another, mental health and mental health services, and then homelessness and housing. And in that last one, I've spent many years in my life addressing that issue. I did that while I was at back when we provided rent assistance, and we worked with people in a number of ways to be able to maintain their housing or move into housing if they were homeless. And then while I was at Habitat Humanity, of course, I saw it from that perspective. For years previous to that, in many different ways, I've been involved in helping and addressing the needs of low-income persons. So yes, there's a passion in that area for me, but a lot of things are connected to that, transportation, adequate employment, and so workforce development is something that we need to pay attention to, but those are where my passions are.
In preparing for this evening, I did not include as my questions, if I got to ask you this one, so keep that in mind. This is from someone who is here. Nick, you're first. What is your opinion of the huge garbage recycling issue everyone is talking about?
One minute.
Surely you have compacted this now, because it comes up all the time.
Yeah, I've compacted trash. Thank you, David. This is a major issue. We get taught, we get asked about this all the time, and we're weary of talking about it, to be honest, but I think that the populace is weary of dealing with it as well. And so we need to come to a place where we find a solution that if, if it doesn't please everyone, it pleases most people. I'll go ahead and say, as I have from the beginning, that I do favor roll cards, and we'll have the opportunity to vote on that in August, I believe, and it'll be interesting to see what the result of that is. Whatever, whatever we come to, we need to find something that works for our people and that they feel good about. But let me say this, too. I think that the issue about trash is about more than trash. I think it's about trust and confidence in city government, and that's not to knock our current city government at all. We've gone through a really difficult two years, and I think with everything that we look at, looking backward, we need to look through the lens of the pandemic when we make judgments about it. But we have an opportunity now to do some things that will renew confidence in, in the council and in our city government, in our city's ongoing efforts to meet the needs of people, and we need to be visionary about, about doing that.
All right, Erica Pefferman, you know what the question is. What's your opinion about the huge garbage recycling issues everyone is talking about?
Well, everyone is talking about that, and the good thing is, I think, in our tour of all the forums, all the candidates agree there needs to be a change. I certainly think there needs to be a change. I'm definitely in favor of roll cards. I'm definitely in favor of exploring all options on the table for how to potentially solve this. The city has, one primary job is to be of service to its citizens, and in this place, we have completely failed. And part of that failing was that the city council chose not to listen to staff with their ideas when they brought them. They were asked, they were brought, and they were ignored. So the staff suggested that we move to a limit trash to five trash bags. This was confirmed, Carl. I know you said it wasn't true last time. It is. It was, the staff did come to the, to the city council, said we want five bag limit. We don't want to force them to buy their bags anywhere else. They can use any bags that they want, and the goal was for them to be able to limit the, the trash that was put out the curb. Challenge is this, this didn't solve anything. It's frustrated everyone, and when you're downtown, you see the commercial space full of residential trash. So I don't think we even accomplished the first objective.
All right, here's a question from one of our Zoom participants, and I will read it as it's written, and Erica, you'll be first on this. We frequently lose electrical power in my neighborhood, and we hear that the city is procrastinating, and I think it's supposed to be a solution. Substations need fixing, but powerful groups want solutions that may not be most cost-effective. What will you do to rectify this? This is very disruptive for those who work from home.
This is, quite honestly, when I discovered more information about not only the water treatment facility here in town, but specifically our power grid, I was pretty livid. I, I discovered that not only is procrastination or drug, I can't remember the word you just used, but I would consider this malpractice by the city council currently because of the fact that city staff, again, brought a solution to city council. They didn't care for the solution, which was for the transmission line to go down Nypon, down the south side of town, called Option A. They chose not to listen to that, paid almost $400,000 to a private company, a third party to come in and give their opinion. That company also said the same thing. They decided to put it on pause, and now they want to run it through the fourth ward at a subpart situation to what the original plan was. So this is a prime example of what is happening, because it's costing millions of dollars to do nothing as well. They, they've levied the raised fees on all of us in this room, but have elected to do nothing. So as part of a city council, I will ensure that we keep our promises to the citizens of Columbia.
Nick, if you want me to, I'll read the whole thing, but if not, I'll just get to the.
No, if you would, I'm sure.
All right. This person loses electrical power frequently in their neighborhood. Hear that the city is procrastinating a solution. Substations need fixing, but powerful groups want solutions that may not be most cost-effective. What will you do to rectify this? It's very disruptive for those, especially who are working from home.
Yeah. Well, I'm not sure I disagree with most of what Erica said about this. We, we do need to address it, and when it comes to addressing our needs for energy in, in general, we've got to look comprehensively at the way that the city does that. Among the things that we need to address are what we're doing in the acquisition of power. And so one of the things I'm concerned about is climate change. I do think that we have an opportunity, at least by 2035, and really by 2030, to move to a place where the city is acquiring all of the power that is used in the city in that way through renewable sources. That can happen, and that needs to be part of the solution. But regarding the grid itself, I'm concerned about that, too, and I think that we need to review it, and need to review that sooner rather than later.
This is, well, hold on, because I think you're going to like this follow-up question from a different listener, and you started talking about this a few moments ago, but we're going to start with Nick on this 60-second response. What are your thoughts of the electrical transmission expansion along Nypon Boulevard, which has been on hold for several years? I think you can take that as a follow-up and kind of hold that to your comments that you want to make on that issue.
I think I sort of spoke about it. I've been disappointed at what's happened with the failure of that, that power line going through that area, and, and it's true that what is in its place now is a conversation that I think is inadequate in and of itself to move a lot of that, that infrastructure up along, into the fourth ward, along the Scott Boulevard. So that, that's going to be disruptive to many people. And let's face it, whatever we do in this way, as we, as we grow and as demand for power grows as well, it's going to be disruptive, the manner in which we put infrastructure into the city. So we need to hear the best advice we hear about that from consultants, from staff. We need to hear from citizens who have their opinions and are closest to the circumstances in which we're going to address this, and then we need to make the best decisions we can. Some of those are going to be hard decisions, but we're called on, on, we're called on to do that. And now you can use that as you'd like.
Yeah, I think I was pretty clear that I, I find that the, that the original plan should be definitely looked at again, and, and the professionals that we've paid, along with our staff professionals, should be listened to. With that being said, Nick did mention the plan to go to 2035, 100% renewable energy, and I wanted to comment on that, because much like the trash situation, when we have situations like this, we have unforeseen consequences. I think reducing our trash by limiting how much people can set out was a great noble idea, and I think anybody can get behind that. Going to 100% renewable energy is a wonderful idea and very noble also. However, it's costly. It's expensive, and just like the burden of having to buy additional trash bags for families, especially in low-income families, the cost to go 100% renewable energy to our city will fall directly on the shoulders of those least, least able to bear it. So I think we should just be very careful when we're making these decisions and consider equity among those decisions, and consider who is going to ultimately end up paying for that.
We're, I'm going to be running out of time here in the next four or five minutes, so it's the last call if anybody has a question from the audience or on our Zoom listeners. And while we wait for that, I have a couple of questions. I had the good fortune of getting the Board of Realtors forum that was at the end of January, and here you are, 100 forums since then. So my question for you is, and we'll start with, I think Erica's first on this one. What is your energy level right now? And your, I mean, I, I expected that to elicit some chuckles, but I'm, I'm really serious because I think that when we, when we look at what you've gone through as far as the forums are concerned, you know what? You still have, if you're elected in less than two weeks, you will still have your energy level tested, I think, through council meetings and retreats and special other opportunities that you'll have. So I'm just curious as to what your energy levels are right now and how you have changed since the end of January to now three weeks plus into March as a candidate.
Well, this is easily, hands down, has been one of the most illuminating things I've ever done in my life. I am, I am a little tired. I am working a full-time job, running our company of 14 employees. I have children. I am serving on boards, nonprofit boards right now, so I'm a little tired. But I tell people after April 5th, it gets better either way, because when you're not campaigning, you're able to do the work, and that's different. You know, campaigning every single day, all day long is more, is more than actually sitting on the council and doing our work. When I first considered doing this, I spoke to several council members to see how much time they spent, and that time is easily allocated into our schedule. I will say how I'm different now versus then. When you get a chance to see how the sausage is made a little bit, I got a little bit more energized by it, because there's some things that need to be addressed. And when you have an opportunity to go in and feel like you can be a convener and help people collaborate and address some of the things, maybe with a bullhorn, that have been overlooked, is a privilege to do, and so I'm even more passionate now about it than I was then.
All right, and Nick, your thoughts about energy level and how you have changed over the, however many weeks that is since the end of January?
Well, this has been a taxing process. It's been an incredibly educational process. I've learned so much, and I've been formed a lot by this process. It's also been energizing, and the place that it's been energizing has been, has been in having conversations with people. As I've had those one-on-one conversations with residents of the fourth ward, I've learned so much from them. I've gained perspective from them, and I've gained energy from them, and I'm convinced more than ever that I'm ready to do this job. You know, one of the things that I've heard someone say is that you really don't want to elect someone who needs the job. You want to elect someone who wants to do it, and that's me. I don't need this. I'm not personally at risk in whatever happens as a result of this election, and I want to do this. My life has been a life of service, and this is an opportunity for me to serve in that way. And let me just say in response to what Erica said about the noble ideas about energy, I think now is the time for noble ideas and noble goals that push us and challenge us that could be changed over time, but that start us in a direction so to go where we really want to end up.
I'm going to do, and I'm looking for my director, floor director here. Can I do one more question and then to wrap up? All right, I'm going to apologize to one of the Zoom listeners. I'll ask the question that I won't get to for the Ward Four candidates and Ward Three and the mayors, but for the Ward Four candidates, the last one, this is a Zoom question. West Parkway, East Parkway, Garth, have a lot of students walking to Grant School, as well as many other walkers. They have many drivers exceeding the speed limit. Several of us have asked for speed bumps or other traffic calming devices. What will you do, what will you support to keep our neighborhood safe? Nick, you're first.
But that's really interesting. I walked here up Garth, and I walked, my daughter just from school, my wife takes her to school at Grant every day that school is in session. So there are a lot of people. One of the residents along Garth, very excitedly told me recently, and I don't, I haven't been able to confirm this, that there are going to be speed bumps to go onto Garth. There are a lot of ways to address traffic calming. That's one of those certain, and I've heard my neighbors talk about East and West Parkway as well, of course, and have sought to have a traffic calming brought there. Part of the problem is, we did not plan well for this in putting our transportation plan together. So we have a number of places that need to address this issue, and the list is long for addressing them. So the city is going by, going down the list as they can. They re-prioritize those needs from time to time, as I understand it, and then they address them as they can. There are limited resources to do this, but what I want us to do is continue to look for ways that we can be creative about that.
Erica Pefferman, your same question about traffic calming devices, especially on the streets that are right around here and Grand Elementary School.
Yeah, so I think it's just common sense. I, I don't understand sometimes why it takes us so long to get to the right, the right decision. You know, if we have children and their parents walking to school, they need to be safe. So traffic calming should be really prioritized for those areas, and, and if we're talking about a lack of funds to do so, a creative, innovative way to do it would be pass the use tax, because the use tax will pull about a little over $5 million on the, on the conservative side into our operating fund, and that general fund goes to pay for things such as this. So if we're saying we can't keep our kids safe because we don't have enough money to do that, then what we need to do is make sure we pass the use tax, which will make sure that the local 2% sales tax that the citizens of Columbia have already agreed to pay is collected on online sales. And so obviously, those things are necessary and needed, and I usually find that when we have a, a situation that is super common sense and easy to solve, people are, are struggling and figuring out how to pay for it. So let's find a new way to pay for it.
We're going to have minute closing comments from our Ward Four candidates in a moment. I just want to make an editorial comment of Crestmere, which is the street right here. It's about a block log. I'm very familiar with that, and the best traffic calming device that we have on that street is don't patch the holes. Because that street is in very bad shape, and if you want to slow down traffic or catch people by surprise, just don't fix the streets. I don't know if I would run on that if I was a candidate, but that keeps the traffic going slower.
I want to go on record and say that's a bad idea.
Yeah, but you know what I'm talking about. Nick Foster, you're a 60-second closer.
I want to thank the league again for having us here tonight and the other candidates, and it's been kind of interesting, Erica and I, this is the first time it's just the two of us, and that's, that's been cool, and to hear our questions that come from the audience has been good as well, and I appreciate that. And I do think that that's an important aspect of what we need to do in looking for. We need to hear from the people of our of our city, the residents of our city. We need to work hard at that. We're not doing well enough on that at this point, and I'm committed to doing it. I also want to say again that this is a job I want to do. City government is about providing providing services to the residents of the city. I've been providing service for over about twenty years in the nonprofit community and in churches before that. I know how this works. I know how to do it, and I want to do it in this way now. I've been looking at the story of Darwin Heineman, a former mayor of this city. And I'd invite you to go back and look at things like the 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 vote to buy Stevens Lake Park and the vote to build the Ark. Two things that we can't imagine in this city anymore, but at the time, they barely passed. That's visionary that's visionary leadership, and that's what I want to bring to Columbia and especially the fourth ward.
Erica Pepperman, your final thought tonight?
Yeah, as I sit here, listen, Nick, one of the things I am grateful for is that I got a chance to get to know him and the other candidates that are running. You've got a lot of really great people that are are interested in putting their gifts in the game. And what I think you have to do is make your decision based on those that are most closely aligned with what you're passionate about. I am personally passionate about affordable housing. If families have a secure place to live, then you see crime go down. You see children do better in school. If you see people have jobs, workforce development is incredibly important to me. I'm on the Workforce Development Committee right now at the Chamber. If they have jobs, they change their family trees. They're able to provide for their families and create change in ways that they can't otherwise. I agree. I believe in safety. We have lost ten police officers since the beginning of January, and we are not, we are not at all close to competitive when it comes to law enforcement. And we need to find a way to make sure that Columbia remains safe and our infrastructure. We can no longer defer this maintenance and kick these cans down the road any longer. We must hold the council accountable for what the citizens have asked for, and I will promise to do that if you vote for me on April fifth.
She's Erica Pepperman. He's Nick Foster. They're the candidates for Ward Four, and we appreciate their time tonight and. New candidates up at the front. We are back at the Columbia Public Library for tonight's League of Women Voters Forum, and again, we appreciate the library hosting this. We appreciate those of you who are here in person and also those of you who are following our conversation via Zoom and especially those who are listening on the radio stations, KFRU and also KOPE. We are in the portion where we are going to hear the two candidates who would like to represent Ward Three of the City Council. And after this, we will move into our candidates for mayor. So we'll have about twenty five minutes like we did with Ward Four to get to know the candidates and to have an opportunity to ask them many of the same questions that we just heard from Ward Four. So you all had a chance to already polish up your answers, knowing what the questions are going to be. And then we will move on to any other questions that the audience might give to us and also any questions that might come to us from those who send them to the chat feature on the Zoom link. So this is the candidates for Ward Four, and we are going to let them do as we did before, a two minute presentation.
Ward Three.
Ward Three, I'm sorry, Ward Three. I've said that four was on my mind. Ward Three, thank you. So we'll let them have their two minute opening statements, and then we will move into questions, a minute on each question. And then after that, we'll have an opportunity to hear the closing thoughts and closing comments. Carl Scholar, we're going to start with you and let you do a two minute presentation here.
Well, thank you. Good to see you again, David. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for inviting me to this candidate forum. I'm a Marine Corps veteran, husband, father of three, grandfather of two, four term third ward city councilman and Columbia's mayor pro town. I have made Columbia my home for the past forty two years. I'm a psychologist trained at Missouri University, where I retired from interdisciplinary biomedical research as a research director in the MU School of Bitterning Medicine. And a week ago, I was honored to receive the twenty twenty two Missouri University Staff Retiree of the Year Award for your astonishing accomplishments on behalf of the university and our community since your retirement in two thousand and eight. I currently represent the city of Columbia on several panels for the National League of Cities, including Human Development Federal Advocacy Committee, the Race Equity and Leadership Council, the University Communities Council. And I serve as a National League of Cities University Fellow. I am the recipient of seven National League of Cities Leadership Excellence Awards. Last year, I was also honored to receive the twenty twenty Boom County Mulestino's Market Lifetime Achievement Award for my contribution to society. And this year, I received the Sierra Club Osage Group Campaign endorsement in appreciation of my long term commitment to protecting America's environment. I'm the past vice chair and seven year member of the Columbia Planning Zone Commission, past chair and thirteen year member of the Columbia Environment Energy Commission. I'm a twelve year member of the Columbia Chamber of Commerce and Government Affairs Committee. I'm proud to say I was the originator and have hosted bimonthly Saturday morning coffee shop office hours the past fourteen years. My other interests include public radio. I've hosted KOPE's Thursday morning air classical musical radio program for the past nine years. As a twenty two year public servant, I represent leadership experience, institutional memory, continuity, community access for all and real deliverables. And those deliverables, since I was first elected to the city council, police personnel have increased by eighteen percent, fire personnel have increased by thirteen percent. I found council consensus on significant street improvements to Mexico, gravel road, Clark Lane, Ballinger Road, Harris Road, Keen Drive and East Walnut Street and investments in Stevens Lake, Ryan Stevens, Indian Hills, McKee Street, Whitegate and Woodridge Parks, and for Harmony Brent and Colt Railroad Trails and Connectors. Hopefully, we can discuss my third ward priorities later in this forum.
All right, that's Carl Scholar, Ward Three candidate, and Roy Lovelady is challenging him, and we'd like to hear your first two minute comments tonight.
Thank you. My name is Roy Lovelady, and I am a local business owner. I am thirty eight years of age. I was an activist, well, I still am an activist, who turned activated after the tragic death of George Floyd, which leads into like why I want to run for a city council. I found myself calming the people and keeping them calm while out protesting, and but we had to develop a mission. And our mission was to get the chokehold, the loophole within the chokehold policy chain. That led me into City Hall. While at City Hall, I heard lots of things that were happening in Third Ward that directly affected me or that was around my home or something to that nature. So I gave testimony. When given testimony, I felt like my conversation fell on mute ears. Immediately, I had researched other commissions, and I started to see where would I be fit best. With my education and understanding, I learned that they all answer to the city council. So why sit at one of those seats when I can go for a seat that actually gets a vote on what those other boards and commission actually have a say so to do? Within the chokehold, it did change, but the loophole still exists. And so I've I've been boots on the ground ever since then. I've come to, I did the math, and it was nineteen meetings, but I've actually been at twenty two meetings. I've only missed two meetings in the last twenty two months, which shows my dedication to learning and understanding. I may not be the most experienced, but I'm extremely dedicated, determined, and dependable. I will lead with trust, integrity, and truth, if given the opportunity to be a third ward city council member. Thank you all for having me, and I look forward to answering the questions.
All right, we'll start with Carl Scholar on this one, and again, these are the questions that were provided by the League, and we'll start with those. How will you ensure follow through of the city council decisions by the city manager after those decisions are made?
Well, it seems like in some of the discussions that we've had in the forums, there's been some misunderstanding about how the 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 local city government operates. Obviously, the city council is there to provide policy and legislative direction to the city manager. The city manager is there to implement that policy and legislative direction. Obviously, we have bi- usually bimonthly meetings with the city manager to bring up issues, his issues and and our issues and to make sure there is follow up for for some of the the policy decisions or the legislative decisions that are given to him. We don't have, as the city council, we are not responsible for their personnel. We don't interact directly with with the the city manager's purview to 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 direct his personnel. We obviously come and ask for information from all of the department directors. That's the city manager and the city manager's staff responsibility. That is to provide information to the city council. But a lot of it has to do with follow up, and a lot of it has to do with the with the our constituents encouragement to make sure that those things that we have decided to do.
Roy Lovelady, your question the same. How will you ensure follow through of the city council decisions by the city manager after the decisions are made?
And that's a great question. So one thing that I truly understand, just being a regular citizen, sitting back and watching the process as it happens, I realize that in order to to make sure that those decisions come to pass is conversation, communication, and then delegating and actually making sure that the work that was promised, the the laws that was passed, the ordinance that was voted on are actually being pushed through as promised. So you first have to listen in order to to make sure that you have to listen and then vote. Once your vote has been passed, it is the city manager's job to make sure that it's implicated. And if it does not get pushed through, then again, you must go back to that city manager and host that conversation. And he must be a listening ear. You must be a listening ear, and together you should work towards getting the job done.
This is the second question I asked the other candidates from the other ward, and we'll start with Roy on this one. What are the unique characteristics of a ward, Ward Three, that you seek to represent, and how will those be reflected in your priorities?
One of the biggest things that on my platform that I stated was crime. Crime in Third Ward is really high. It does overflow into downtown, but how do we address that? We address that by fixing the streets, the roads, providing resources. Third Ward does not have resource hubs like some of the other wards, so I will I will provide resources. I will also work my hardest to talk to the police officers to implement community policing. I think community policing is, when done correctly, if you use a guardian approach versus a militant approach, then it could really help the citizens communicating, talking, learning their names, understanding their wants and their needs, and being able to move forward effectively so that the city as a whole can all thrive. So I would definitely say crime will be one of my big things that I will focus on if I were. Third Ward does have a lot of things that it's lacking, so it needs proper growth, the proper infrastructure. It's a plethora of things that I will work towards, but crime will be one of my biggest focuses.
To Carl Scholar, what are the unique characteristics of a ward that you have represented and seek to continue to represent, and how will those be reflected in your priorities?
You know, I've represented this ward for a long time, and 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 the unique characteristics of the ward really have a lot to do with the the range of of the underserved versus the very well served and the privileges. We have quite a quite a diversity. We also have a large diversity of population with with the with the LGBTQ and 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 black and brown populations and so on. I agree with Mr. Lovelady to a large degree that crime has been an issue, but I also had mentioned on several occasions that we had a program in place with the previous administration that was discontinued, unfortunately, because of some issues with the current police chief about priority areas and 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 a pilot project that had folks going door to door with social and social connections to ask people what it is they needed in their wards. That pilot project that was in the guise of community policing with community police officers effectively reduced crime in those areas by twenty percent. That program was discontinued, and I vow that I will replace that program and bring it back so that we can make some progress in the third ward.
This question is one that I ask Ward Four candidates, and I'll ask you both also, and we'll start with Carl on this one. It follows up, and I think you're going to say that you just answered this, but maybe there's a different way that you can put this together. And it's the question that you remember when you were here. Do you have a passion for a particular project for Columbia in your role as a council person?
You know, my 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 priorities for the third ward always have to do with the public safety and infrastructure and then and then community integrity. Those are the the three stalwart posts that I have in my in my campaign platform. But I'm going to divert from that and get a little bit differently because I think the major problem that that I see in the current configuration of the city council within the last few years is is some of the 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 problems that we have with discussing staff failures on the dais. And I don't think that's a good thing to do. I think that those are the kinds of questions that we need to investigate behind the scenes and ask the staff about information and so on. If there are problems that we see that are that are not being or or policies that we see that are not being followed, we need to follow that up, if you will. But I think doing that in public and criticizing the staff in in public just undermines the credibility of the city council. And I frankly think that that's one of the biggest priorities that I have with respect to 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 increasing the amount of confidence in the city council with respect to the public.
All right, Roy Lovelady, what is your your passion? You have a passion for a particular project for Columbia.
Yes, so my passion isn't one thing in particular, but it's it's more so the community. So I am very community led, very community driven, and a lot of issues come up at city council. So my passion will be to listen to the constituents and the citizens of Columbia, Missouri, and make sure that we're hearing exactly what they want, because a lot of times these conversations are happening and we're delivering what what the city wants or what and and I know this to be true because after certain decisions have been made, then if you were at city council, it's filled with people who are directly affected before sometimes and after. And so I think that my passion would be to get out into these communities, make sure that I hear their voices and make sure that I vote according to what they want, because that's what we sit at that seat and say that we're going to do. And I want to do just that as your third ward representative.
We'll start with Roy on this one. This is the garbage question. What's your opinion of the huge garbage recycling issues everyone is talking about?
Okay, so my opinion of the garbage situation, I definitely will say that it needs changing. We all agree to that. Just to address road cards, and my for road cards, I'm for any solution that works. They have gathered enough signatures, and City Council will be voting at the next meeting on whether to to fix the ordinance banning road cards and then it go into ballot. So I really believe that it's going to take some type of hybrid situation. There's no way to really please everybody. So I think that we're going to do a road car situation as well as a pay as you throw situation, but I think that the pay as you throw, we need to look and address it now. So if one thing that I could do, if I have to do now, is I would immediately get rid of the logo bags. And then I will, because that's putting more plastic inside of a bag, inside of a landfill. We want people to recycle. So how are we going to, if we put in more plastic inside of plastic, I see that stop starting that small little piece left. And the other thing is the data that the city, the city manager guy and the staff guys showed that there is a lot of different options. And one of those options that Kansas City does, and I really like, is a tag situation. So they have no base pay, but you're allowed to tag. You get two bags for free, and you're allowed to tag bags afterwards. It's a dollar and a quarter. So it's still generating revenue while at the same time handling the trash.
Carl Scholar, you know the question.
Well, there's not enough time to talk about this.
Too much time.
But I'm even going to take less time, and I'm going to digress to one of the comments that my my partner has made with respect to decisions made on the city council. And yes, we are beholden to represent the the folks that we that we are representing. And and it's easy to do that. If the if seventy or eighty percent of the folks that you have contacted are in favor of a particular issue, when it gets to be a fifty fifty proposition, that gets to be a decision that's much more difficult. And I think some folks are not anticipating just how difficult that is. But let me let me deal with the 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 garbage issue, the trash issue. I'm agnostic about the trash issue. I was around in in twenty fourteen when these discussions first started and in twenty sixteen when there was a public referendum. It it was defeated by eight points, and I am unwilling to to disenfranchise the voters that voted for that, and I think the proper thing to do, and we will have that decision to make, we can remove that ordinance from the city ordinances. The proper decision, I think, would be to have a public referendum so we can find out whether or not that has changed with folks. It may have, it may indeed have, and we will do it. I will do whatever the folks want when it comes to this public referendum.
All right, we have another question that was sent in by one of our Zoom participants. And one of the candidates for the fourth ward, which was the partial portion of our forum prior to the third ward candidates. One of those candidates said the use tax would generate five million dollars. So the question from the participant is, over what time would that amount of income be generated? Carl, your first.
That was an estimate per year, and the estimates are from five to nine million dollars, depending on on what that means. I mean, the Chamber of Commerce, a lot of the local government entities, Ashland and and Hallsville and some of the other ones, Boom County in general are favoring both of those propositions. I hope they pass because that money goes directly into the general fund. The general fund uses probably two thirds of its funds for public safety. The general fund uses probably two-thirds of its funds for public safety, among other things. But there are a lot of possibilities here, and it's 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 an issue that just it just makes it a level playing field for the local businesses. The Chamber of Commerce is is very much in favor of it for that reason. And that is it evens the playing field, so the local bit, people are encouraged to shop at local businesses and just not buy online, particularly for really large companies that buy a lot of their resources out of state and so on and save the save the sales taxes, which should be benefiting our community.
Roy, you're saying my question for you?
Um, that was a great question for Carl to answer. He did a great job. He has that information, so I think that he did a great job, so I'm not gonna uh back that up or try to go over what he said. But what I will say is for the fifty fifty comment, I understand the fifty fifty split. I own a business, and so there's a lot of times where I have to have conversations with dual staff members. And I have, I'm I'm the deciding factor, so that's a fifty fifty split. So I understand that my decision will be extremely important. Far as the tax, I will support this tax and make sure that when you do, you vote twice if you live inside the city limits, one for the county and one for the city. Um, as far as the money, it goes into the general fund. Who gets to appropriate that money? City council, so. For with, okay, thank you.
Uh, Roy Love Lady, your first one on this one. What are your views on the electrical transmission expansion that was talked about along Nippon Boulevard, which has been on hold?
Okay, so I've had the opportunity to read an article about this, and that's the extent of what I know about it. But in that article, I it it was filled up with information, and I'm pretty sure that Carl was seated during that, so he knows a lot about it, so we're going to hear that in just a moment. But what I would like to use, I know it. So what I would like to say is, when when we hire people to do certain things, we must trust that process. We hired a consultant that said one thing, we had another person that said the same thing. So when people are stating and saying one thing, and I understand that um the article said that lots of people came in and expressed their frustration. But we still have to do what's best for the ci- city, and that will be one of those fifty fifty situations. And I know that I said that I will listen to the citizens, but now we found ourselves in a situation where, yeah. So I understand that back and forth, I get it. But um so what what I will basically say is, I do have the city's best interests at heart. Even though that I'm very community-driven, I understand the economics and the future in which where the city is going.
Well, Carl Scholar, what do you want to say about the transmission lines?
You betcha. And my opponent anticipated this, and that's for sure. I was around for that discussion uh with option A and the transmission lines and the redundancy and the recommendations and the and the consultants and all the rest of it and the money and the money that was spent. And I consistently voted for the option A, which was the recommendation early on. The problem was that the city council changed in the ensuing years. And there were two council members that decided that instead of a majority to favor option A to proceed with that, after all of that work, after probably five or six years worth of work, um, they decided to change their minds and look for other alternatives. One of which was uh the the mayor's alternative to suggest that there be some transmission lines on the north side of town in conjunction with Ameren and so on. That proved to be a very expensive proposition. It was not viable. Uh, and now the IRP is recommending some of the redundancy options that were inherent in option A. I still support option A. I will continue to support option A. I always have, and I will continue to try and advocate for that and achieve consensus on the city council so we can have the best possible solution for energy redundancy in this community.
We are close to the allotted time for our third ward candidates, but we've got a couple of other questions that I'm going to squeeze in. Carl Scholar, you start with this one. This is from one of the participants via Zoom. What are your ideas for using pandemic funds to best help our community move to the future? It's truly a huge one-time opportunity, says the person who sent that in.
Well, we've done that. Uh, there there are two tranches of the the ARPA funds. The ARPA funds came in two different categories, uh twelve and a half million dollars that we've already received. They're they're in the bank uh with interest. And and we have established a process, the city council has established a process for community outreach to determine what the second tranche of that money will be, the second twelve and a half million dollars. That will be a very open process, and that can be open to direct payments or anything else that the public wants to see. But the first tranche of that money was decided by all of the city council, including some of the members who had recently raised a resolution to change the 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 policy that they voted for, or at least they voted for in terms of the consensus. And those resources were dedicated to a resource center for homelessness and housing insecurity, a rapid access center to provide twenty-four seven mental health resources, a process to combat community violence, and barrier-free workforce development programs. Those are all very worthy goals. We are sending out RFPs to establish how to spend those monies. And I'm very, I I was recently on a National League of Cities meeting that said we have to, there is some urgency to this because with an it be an administration change, we could be facing a a a situation in which some of these funds may be withdrawn. We have to make these decisions, and we have to make them soon.
All right, um, well, I'm wrap up our questions. On this will be your turn, Roy, on this particular question about your ideas for using the pandemic funds.
Okay, so for the ARPA funds, they, it's already been decided for exactly before um for workforce development, mental health, crime, and homelessness. Thank you. We work well together. And we will, one of us is gonna, and one of us is gonna be the citizen that's pushing the other. And so basically, that money, the first twelve point five will be um RFP out. They did allocate some of the money just recently in Monday's meeting. Um, my question is, is with the RFP process, you have the same group of people who always are funded. Um, we need more people from the non-for-profit sectors and grassroots sectors who who may not have exactly what it takes in order to get some of that RFP money. And if and I'm a firm believer that if you do what you've always done, you'll get what you've always gotten. And so my goal will be to make sure that we participate in this robust conversation with the community for the second half and definitely make sure that that's effective and get that money passed out equitably as possible. Because if it was COVID relief money, we need to address COVID issues.
I'm going to ask one quick question. It's kind of related to what I asked at the end of the other section, and then we'll go to your closing comments. We'll start with Roy Love Lady. Is this your first run for office? It's your first campaign. Tell me how you have grown or changed from the first forum that you did, the Board of Realtors, back in late January to now? What is, what transformation have you seen in yourself over this time?
Wow, um, so my first um forum, as you saw, the first thing that I ever made was, I've got butterflies. That that hasn't changed because I'm butterflies that I'm passionate about it. So through, I have read so much information. So one thing has definitely changed is my education and my knowledge of what actually goes on with the city. Another thing that I I I want to talk about is my energy. I have energetic days where I just cannot wait to get stuff done. And then I have days where I'm like, oh, Lord, I'm knocking another door. Who's gonna slap it in my face? I just want your vote so I can do what I want to do by listening to you, of course. But I have grown in so many different ways, so many different ways that it's just like hearing what the people have to say really continues to encourage me. And they they constantly tell me, don't give up, don't give up, we need a person like you. And I want to be that person.
That's almost a good closing statement, but I'll come back to it. Carl Scholar, this is not your first campaign. You've run successful ones, you've lost one. Have you changed at all? Does does a new campaign change you in any way?
Of of course. I I mean, uh, you know, this is my sixth campaign, actually, and I have lost one. And and from the time that we had the Seaborum Forum until this time, obviously, you polish some of the, you know, the some of the comments that you make and so on, and you know something about the some of the anticipated questions. But all during that time, the the beauty of campaigns are that you face other people uh directly. And so you feed off of that. You want to get ideas and and you have to respond and so on, and with your able leadership as well for it as as a, you know, as a moderator, you do that as well. You get out and you knock on people's door. That's where you find out the information. That's where you find out what's going on in the community. That's the value. Some people tell you, you know, we're not interested, get out of here. We don't, we really don't want your yard sign. But there are also some people that want to sit down for a half an hour and talk to you about all kinds of issues. That's the beauty of campaigning. But for me, the value of the office really has to do with the dynamics of the city council itself and the and the the ability to make decisions and compromises in the best interest of the city. That's, I think, that's what's important, and it's important for any newcomer or it's important for any veterans for doing this for any period of time.
Final comment, you have sixty seconds. I said you gave a good one a moment ago, but you've got it.
So um, I may not be the most experienced, and I've said this several times, I'll open with that. But like I said, I'm dedicated, I'm determined, I'm dependable. Um, one thing that I had to do was read over six hundred pages of information to obtain knowledge, some in which that was extremely helpful, some was extremely redundant. But I gained knowledge. And through this process, I just want people to know that anything is possible, anything is possible. I'm reaching for the youth, I'm reaching for the votes, I'm reaching to create a better future for all. So as a a normal citizen running for office who thinks and knows that it's time for change, I think that change could be me. And I would love to continue to have conversations with anybody who would like to talk to me. I'm dedicated, I'm determined, I'm dependable, I'm integral, I'm trustworthy, and I promise to always tell my truth. Thank you. So April fifth, if you're looking to cast a vote for third ward, Roy Love Lady, together, we can be the difference.
Carl Scholar, your last comment, please.
You know, my opponent, Roy Love Lady, he's a very well-intentioned guy. I almost loved him. But I don't always agree with him. And and as a twenty-two-year Columbia public servant, I represent institutional memory, leadership experience, continuity, community access for all, and real deliverables. I mentioned those deliverables before. My third word priorities, public safety, road sidewalks and street lights, the very thing that some of these underserved uh uh areas told us about, inexpensive solutions to to real problems and neighborhood equity and integrity. Equity is central to all of this, including the city strategic plan. And that's something I'm devoted to, and I'm devoted to it within the context of my membership in the National League of Cities and the Race Equity and Leadership Council. In addition, my city-wide prayers cover a broad spectrum of challenging issues. Successful city council candidates owe to their community to have carefully considered all of these issues and experienced leadership matters. And I, just one thing, somebody asked me, just a, just a, a mo-, somebody asked me to be a little funnier. A little bit of humor. So I looked back in some of my notes, and I, I don't normally quote Republican presidents. Maybe maybe Eisenhower when it comes to the, you know, the military industrial complex. But Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-four said to Walter Mondale, "I will not make age an issue in this campaign. I am not going to exploit for political purposes my opponent's youth and inexperience."
Well, with that, some of us knew where that was going.
No, just with youth comes new ideas.
Carl Scholar, Roy Love Lady, candidates for third ward on the city council of Columbia. We welcome you back to tonight's League of Women Voters Forum at the Columbia Public Library. We are in our portion now where we're going to be able to question the four mayoral candidates, and they will have twice as long as we had with the two candidates for Ward Three and Ward Four. So that will be going to about eight twenty-five. That's what the library has asked us to wrap this up about that time. So again, I'll reiterate to those who are following us through Zoom that you have an opportunity to use the chat feature and get your questions that way. We'll try to get as many as we can, if we um if we possibly can, we'll get to all of them. And then if you're here in this room, you can write your question on the index cards, catch the attention of one of the league members right here, Barbara, and she will um she will take your question and bring it up to me. Again, uh, you have, if you've been following us through the evening, you know that there are two wards up for election now. That's two out of the six, and so it's kind of on a rotation every year. There's going to be two wards that will be up for election, and every three years, the mayor has a chance to um either run for reelection, which the current mayor has decided not to, or open it up for new candidates for mayor. So we have the mayoral candidates here, Randy Minchu, David Seaman, Barbara Buffalo, and Tonya Hee. We're going to allow them to do their two-minute opening statements, and then we will have questions. I'm going to start with questions that were provided me by the League of Women Voters. There are a couple of those, and then we already have some questions that have been provided, I think, by some of our audience members here in this room and some also who have commented or brought a question to our attention through Zoom. So we'll take those a minute at a time, and we'll see where we end up. I uh hope to be able to ask a couple of questions also that I would like to hear the candidates respond to. So uh, we're going to start closest to me on my left, Randy Minchu. You have two minutes, and we welcome you tonight.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to um be a part of the forum. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this every year. I think it's important. My name is Randy Minchu. My wife Cindy Minchu is in the audience. Uh, we moved here in nineteen ninety-four with our four children. We started a business in nineteen ninety-nine called Swift Windows Doors and More. Uh, that business still exists today. Uh, I am an entrepreneur um since the eighties, have owned my own businesses and have served in the recovery community for forty-six years because I had a drug addiction issue when I was a kid. So um, my work here in Columbia with with the addiction community, my wife's worked with the the women in addiction. That that life of service uh has has served us well. Uh, I've enjoyed that. Uh, I desire to be the mayor of Columbia is along that same lines. It's a, it's a non-paying gig, so there's no, there's no profit to be made out of this. But at sixty-four years of old, at sixty-four years old, I feel like I learned some things. I've get get gathered some wisdom. I would agree with Carl about Reagan's statement earlier, so. And I'm and I'm excited about uh about the opportunity to be the ambassador for, uh, the chief ambassador for Columbia. Thank you.
Thank you. That's Randy. Try that again, is it on now? That I lost track of, which was when I was muted and when I wasn't. Uh, that's Randy Minchu. David Seaman, your two-minute opening statement tonight.
Yes, thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, the library for hosting, and for David Lyle, who I believe is retired and still doing very much. My name is David Seaman. Uh, I moved to Columbia in two thousand and three as a sophomore in high school when my dad got a job working for Governor Holden. Rockbridge graduate, had the opportunity to actually play football in Rockbridge with with Randy Sunclay. It's a great experience. Columbia College graduate, United States Marine Corps officer. Uh, and now I am serving as a member of the Columbia Public Schools Board of Education. Been doing that since uh June of twenty twenty, just as the pandemic struck. The last two years have been challenging. There've been a lot of challenging decisions that have come down our way, and we've done the best job that we can. And that is a part of the reason why I'm running for mayor. Because those challenges have led us down this path and give me that experience to be able to make decisions for the city. The other reason is that because as a student at Rockbridge, I was a teenager. Just a few months after my father died, I became a parent my senior year of high school. And the only reason I'm sitting here today is a school board member and as a mayoral candidate and all the other things I listed is because of books like you, you picked me up and carried me forward so I could be here. Uh, you gave me an opportunity, and I want to ensure that as mayor, every person in the city has the same opportunities I have. Thank you.
Thank you. That is David Seaman. Now we move to Barbara Buffalo for her opening two minutes.
I'm trying not to get yelled at for moving the microphone. Um, so my name is Barbara Buffalo. Yes, thank you to the League of Women Voters, Jane of the Regional Library. So my name is Barbara Buffalo. Yes, thank you to the League of Women Voters, GANF Regional Library, KOPN, KFRU, and then David Lyle, I'd like to re-bring you back for this. So, you know, we started with you and we'll end with you. So I've had the privilege of being a public servant for the last seventeen years in the city of Columbia. I worked for MU Extension and then for the last eleven years, I was the first sustainability manager for the city of Columbia. And I did these things because I love this town. I came here in ninety-eight for college and loved it and just stayed. I love the connection between the university and the town. It was different than many other college towns that I looked at. And because it was strong, there were cultural activities going on, people were involved, and it's the people that makes Columbia special. I'm working for the city for the last eleven years. You know, I was thinking about this and people are like, why are you doing this? You know, especially when I turned in my paperwork, the city clerk is like, you know how crazy it is right now. But you know what you're getting yourself into. It's because I am a public servant at heart, you know? I know how the city operates. Of those sitting up here, I've had the, I've had the privilege of doing a city budget, putting together for my department budget. I started with stimulus funds in two thousand and ten, so I understand the ARCA funds that this state's receiving and what we're required to do with that and where our opportunities are. But it's more than just the experience I have working for this city. It's also the vision I have. We need to be thinking now where we want to be in ten, twenty, thirty years and who's going to lead us there. And I think my strong experience, my relationships in our region and across the nation and actually internationally will help bring some of those opportunities we can improve home to Columbia while still celebrating the things that make us special. So I look forward to the questions.
Thank you. Barbara Buffalo, Tanya Heath, you're opening two minutes, please.
All right. Thank you. My name is Tanya Heath, Heath like the candy bar. And I would also like to thank everyone for having us tonight so that we can answer your questions and also share with you our vision of Columbia. I got involved after I had a conversation with a garbage collector this summer in which I found out that they were at fifty percent of their staff and also that the people in Columbia were yelling at the garbage collectors about their displeasure towards the policy. And I wrote a letter to our neighbors and said, please thank a garbage collector. And that led to just really thinking through, you know, my background is in advertising, whether it's in sales or that I have been teaching for over ten years to strategic communication students. And that is all about getting the best ideas through research, refining it and bringing it forward so that that way solutions are actually being implemented for our clients. And so I thought, you know, in a way, you kind of need somebody that's an outsider to come in with new ideas that also knows the city. And since I was born and raised here, I thought that would really be something that I would want to do. And so I started talking to people and I was very excited to hear that they also were looking for new ideas. And so I really want to be a collaborator. I really want to help with coming up with everyone, everyone contributing and also bringing opposites to the table. I think a lot of times right now, people only want to hear one side. And when that happens, we're not getting the benefit of learning what we might need to know from the other side. And so that's something that, you know, win-win with sales, win-win with students that want to succeed but are having a challenge. And so that's what I would like to bring is new ideas and a vision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's Tanya Heath. I want to do this question. I think the most appropriate questions when you're in a forum like this are questions that are appropriate for all of the candidates. This one is not. This is specific towards one candidate. I know he'll be able to handle this question because he's a Marine. But I want to give you a question that I think somebody handed in from here. So you are now serving on the school board. If you are elected mayor, you would resign from that position. So the question is, how can we believe that you will not quit if elected mayor? I, and again, I would not have done that, but we asked for questions. Let's handle it quickly and move on.
Yeah. So I would absolutely resign from the school board. That's, there's no way I can do both. I've already lost my hair. I don't want to lose it. So how, how could you understand that I would not quit the mayorship? Well, you know, I'm going to have to tell you, you just have to trust that. I can't, I can't jump into your mind and give you any ideas. I can tell you that I love this city and there's no other reason why I would enjoy the school board in the middle of a pandemic or why I'm trying to be mayor now.
All right, let's move on. And we're going to start with Randy Mintzhu on this one. This is for all of them. And one of the listeners on Zoom sent in a question similar to this, and it's also a question that the League of Women Voters had for our candidates. If elected with a plurality, not a majority of the voters, how will you represent all people? I mean, someone could be elected with mid-twenty percent of the vote if you split it almost equally four ways. How would you respond to people who would say, but you only had twenty-six percent, you only had thirty percent of the vote and yet you won?
Start with me.
Yeah.
I would say, you know, to whoever has a problem with that, they, they should go about trying to change the way our voting is set up. I would suggest maybe they run for the mayor's office the next time it's, it's available. For me, I take life on life's terms. If I get elected and it's by whatever percentage it is, then that's what was intended to be. I can't change that. I don't like the idea that people are trying to talk other people into getting out so that it's just one against one. That's not the way our system works. It's America. If people want to run for the mayor's office, then let's run. Let's put their best foot forward. The assumption that somehow somebody's going to steal this because there's other candidates, I, that's not America to me.
Before I move on to David Seaman to answer that same question, we have a related question to that. Would you support innovative voting solutions like ranked voting?
Well, that's a great question. I've not, I've not heard anyone complain about this situation until this year. So we've had multiple candidates. We've had really good mayors come out of situations like this where we've had multiple candidates all the way to the end. So I, I don't know. I, I mean, it doesn't seem to me, you know, over time with a little bit of wisdom and a little bit of gray hair, you learn, don't do knee jerk. Don't let one situation persuade you. If history has told you something and we've served, we've had great mayors in Columbia over the years, why would we change this now? So I would probably not go that direction.
David Seaman, it's, it's two questions. You get a minute on each of them. We'll start with the one about if elected with a plurality, not a majority of the voters, how would you represent all of the city?
Yes. So in my experience, leadership is not about governing the fifty-one percent. It's not govern all. It's about leading everyone. As a Marine Corps officer, I was given a control of platoon. I can't tell you that all a hundred percent or even a big percent of Marines in Appleton agree with everything I did. What you do is you build trust and you talk to folks and you understand where they're coming from. That's how you lead. Second question that you asked about ranked voting.
Or some other innovation.
Or some other innovation. I, I'm going to start with saying that there are points that Randy made that are important. What we've been asked to do is consolidate our vote for the quote-unquote greater good. Now, there are a lot of issues that we've talked about in this city. Forty percent of black students are going to go to school tomorrow living in poverty. I wouldn't say that's the current greater good. Fifty percent of people who rank in this city are house, are cosper. That is not the greater good. So what they're not doing is asking us to support the greater good. What you're doing is asking us to support the status quo. And some of us are not acceptable of that. So would I support that type of, of voting? I likely would. But as Randy said, this is something that seems to have just come up now. We're not voting out of fear. You should be voting out of who you think is going to be leading the city in the right direction. Who's going to do the right thing, not afraid of one or two candidates making it.
Barbara Buffalo, you're next. If elected with a plurality, not a majority, majority of the voters, how would you represent all people?
Well, David, I have a goal for a hundred percent. Oh, no, wait, you have family members, so never mind. So, so I think, I mean, this is the point, right? So it's that you still lead all. It's not like, yeah, you're just getting your thirty percent, your fifty percent, your sixty percent, whatever it is. I've taken my approach to the campaign this way. I've talked to everybody. I mean, not literally, but I've had, since I started this, what, twenty weeks ago, I've had a hundred and ten one-on-one individual unique sit-down meetings. I've knocked on hundreds of doors. I've gone to so many community events, regardless of political spectrum of the community event or who the host was, how small or how large. And I did that so that I was designing the leader that we want. And so that means representing more than just the doors that my list says are more likely to vote for me. I knocked on all, I knocked on all doors. Vicky Rebecca Wilson gave me really good advice and she said, knock on every door. And I was like, I'll try. And she has a lot more energy than I did. And then your second question.
Second part of that is, would you support voting solutions or changes like ranked voting?
Yeah. So I would bring up, um, just a small correction. This actually has been discussed in the past. So in two thousand and ten, you know, we had five candidates running for mayor. We had four candidates running for fourth ward. And there was discussion about what does that look like, especially when people have similar, very, a very similar kind of platform. So the discussion came up and nothing was changed. And I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea to talk about this as the city of Columbia grows, is like, what, what do other cities do? You know, I know in some other cities, especially in nonpartisan races, what, what does it look like for you to think about, you know, runoff election or rank choice? Though I have to say, I mentioned runoff election. I imagine the city clerk was like, do you know how much that's going to cost, Barbara Buffalo? Don't say that. So I think it's something that we've been asked to explore and I don't think it's a bad idea. Look into that and then change if change is needed.
Tanya Heath, you're next on this about the elected with a plurality, not a majority. How would you represent all?
Yes. So I have gone to neighborhoods on the east side of town, the west side of town, the north, the south. I have talked to people who have said they will vote for me. I've talked to people who've said that they would not vote to me, for me. And that is totally fine because I can learn as much from the people who say they will not vote for me because they have a favorite candidate as the ones that say that they will vote for me. And I'm not afraid to understand why, what are, what's important issue-wise to other people and understand what their thoughts are in their personal history with that issue. I am completely okay with listening, reaching out, expanding my understanding and representing everyone going forward.
Second part of that, as for all the other candidates, would you support any voting changes or innovative voting solutions? As the way this is worded, you're like ranked voting.
No. When we have gotten the push that we should consolidate, I was really hot about that. I am a twenty-year member of the Daughters of the American Revolution. I believe that that is very undemocratic for a very small, and I'm talking less than a thousand people telling us that we should consolidate and, and, and not take into account the hundred and twenty-five thousand people that live in this city, the ninety thousand who were actual voters. And they also said that those of us that they wanted out needed to be out because of money, not because of ideas, not because of who we represent or our personal history as far as knowing the city and knowing the issues. It was all about money. And for one, I just want to say Columbia is not for sale.
We're going to move on to another question that was provided by perhaps one of the audience members here. David Seaman, you're first on this one. Why are so many areas in the inner city being filled with apartments and apartments that people cannot afford to rent?
So this is really an affordable housing question. And we don't have enough affordable housing units. Back in nineteen seventy, there were a hundred and sixty thousand people in the city. Today is a hundred and thirty thousand. The same time period, there were about a hub, seven hundred affordable housing units through CHR. There's now seven hundred and fifty. We only added fifty affordable housing years through our own housing authority in the last. Sorry, trying to do math, my head now. We don't have enough affordable housing units. We don't know, we do not have enough private affordable housing units in the form of one bedroom apartments and a hundred and fifty thousand dollar starter homes. We are building these, we're, we're attempting to give people a place to live. And one of the solutions that we can figure out is going to planning zone, ensuring that we have affordable over looks, ensuring that we are allowing bungalow courts in our web zone and the potential of even eliminating our web zone altogether.
So we'll have to move to Barbara Buffalo, the question again. Why are so many areas in the city, inner city, being filled with apartments, apartments that people cannot afford to rent?
So the first part of your question is because that's where the infrastructure is. That's where the, you're seeing, a lot of those are catering towards students who, you know, want to just walk to campus or to be downtown because of the vibrancy of our downtown. I think one of the things when we talk about how we design and what, what sort of direction and help the city council and mayor can do is to have that vision for how we want to grow and how we want to develop. So thinking about things like transit-oriented development or as we design our west, the west area neighborhood plan, when we're thinking about how Columbia grows and advocating for that variety of commercial, residential, schools, fire, firehouses, all those sorts of things, so that it doesn't have to just concentrate where we're going. And then the second is about the affordability. And affordability is because of, yeah, what's being put in there and what the housing, the property rates are there. So we do need to explore this, the housing spectrum that we need and that inventory that's needed from everything from, you know, first-time homebuyers up to market rate rental and everything in the trans second.
Tough question for sixty seconds. I think we're finding out from our candidates. Tanya Heath, you're next. Why are so many areas in the inner city being filled with apartments and apartments that people can't afford?
Why are they being filled with apartments?
Why are so many areas in the inner city being filled with apartments?
Well, um, supply and demand and also because of the fact that the university and colleges have grown quite a bit in, in their population since two thousand. And so the university decided land-wise that they were not going to keep putting up dorms because they needed that space for further buildings, which meant that then the private sector had to create their own apartments. And that's why all those happened. And then that's the water main issue that we remember downtown a few years ago that it wasn't meant for that. And, um, so we need to think strategically because just like what happened when people had to send their kids to battle, the, some of the battle kids were stuck out there at midnight after soccer or track practice or football. And, um, you know, that's not right because when they were at Hickman, they could go home after practice and their parents weren't getting off work until midnight and picking them up. So we have to really think about what we want for our community.
On this question, Randy Mintzhu, why are so many areas in the inner city being filled with apartments and apartments that people can't afford to rent?
Well, so the property in the inner city is not owned by the city. It's owned by individuals. And if an individual wants to put up an apartment complex and he can get a permit to put the apartment complex up and he builds it at a certain quality level, that sets the rent at whatever that rent is. The thing that's not being thought of in this conversation is the fact that the kids that were living in the old new apartment now move out of the old new apartment into the new apartment. And the old new apartment now is, that was built on twenty-year ago funds, now is affordable to, to the people who couldn't move into the brand-new one. When me and Cindy first got married in nineteen eighty, I couldn't move into a brand-new house. I moved into a first-time homebuyer house and it was so, the house that someone had moved out of into the second house that they were buying. So to suggest that everyone should be able to, or builders should build apartments downtown that anyone should be able to afford, I mean, it's a capitalist society. There's no, you're not required to do that.
Barbara Buffalo, you're first on this question and the question from, I think, one, maybe you're listening or following us on Zoom. What role do you see Columbia Regional Airport playing in the growth of Columbia?
Oh, yeah. So, um, I can't, sorry. I, I bet half of you in the room are thinking of this low, or the, this singing slogan in your head right now. Sorry. Um, so there, we've heard from economic development from the University of Missouri and our region, the importance of Columbia Regional Airport. Right now, you know, the University of Missouri with the next-gen precision health and with like Missouri isotopes and the, the projects that are coming out of our research reactor, they're connecting us across the world. And so having a strong, healthy airport is going to be part of that to connect us to all the potentials with jobs and our economic development going forward. One of the things that we've also heard is what's the relationship between airport and our regional transportation? And there's going to come a time that we're going to have to think about, how do we get from here to Jefferson City? How do we get from here to the airport? And whether or not we can look into having transit systems that go between the two. So we have more of a regional transportation authority or regional transportation system because we're going to continue to grow and we want to make sure that that's a sustainable growth. Because we're gonna continue to grow and we wanna make sure that that's a sustainable growth.
All right, we'll move to Tanya Heath on the same question. What role do you see Columbia Regional Airport playing in the growth of Columbia?
I believe that as we, I mean, we're at a hundred and twenty-five thousand now and. We really need to look at two hundred thousand so that we can prepare now the things in place so that we can have a smart way going forward. And with that, having an airport that we can use on a regular basis is key. I mean, you know, it's, it's just so important. And to bring speakers in, to bring, uh, job interview people in. It's right here. It's in our backyard. So I think we have to have it. I think one thing though. Uh, that is something that maybe not everyone knows is if you think about the tax dollars and how Ashland put the water. Uh, pipes out there, it's gonna be a challenge as far as our tax dollars not always, you know, being right there. Because the way that the Ashland water mains are, so just FYI.
Randy Minchu, what role do you see Columbia Regional Airport playing in the growth of Columbia?
Well, um, I mean, you can't have a vibrant, uh, city. You can't have a vibrant Columbia. We're, we're, you know, one of the great college towns in the country. And without flights to Dallas, Atlanta, Chicago, um, we won't, we won't keep the employers here that we have. We won't gain new employers. So from an economic development standpoint, it makes total sense. Um, I think, you know, last summer, we lost some flights. I think everybody regionally, all the regional airports lost flights. So I think. Um, you know, we're getting some of those back. Uh, but that's what we've got to have. We've gotta be able to fly to major airports, um, out of Columbia. And, uh, if you talk to the employers, the large employers, the university, which I have, they all, they all need that.
David Seaman, you're final on this one. What role do you see Columbia Regional Airport playing in the growth of the city?
So local airport is an important part of the city. It is a, uh, it is a job attractor. A public transit system is a job sustain. So I can get you here on an airport. How do I get you around town? If you've ridden the bus lately, north side of town, especially on a Saturday, you may be sitting at a bus stop for an hour and a half before the bus shows up. Most of our bus stops are not covered. A lot of them are not placed on sidewalks. So I can attract. All the employers I want at the airport, which is great. We want more jobs. We want increased wages. If I can't get your employees from their doorstep to your building in a safe way, it doesn't mean anything.
We'll go to another question and I think this, well, this question, we'll see how you go with this. Tanya Heath, you're first on this one. Appointing some of the library's board members is one of the responsibilities of the Columbia mayor. What criteria will you look for in future library board members?
Library board members? Okay. All right. Well, when I was about five, I. Uh, baked an apple pie at this library. And so I, I mean, it's not just books. It's cooking glasses and all kinds of things that go on in this library. And so I think appointing someone to this. The library board, you need to have somebody that has, you know, a wide vision and is excited about what our library has to offer. From five all the way up to over fifty and, um, it's just a great library. I love it. I love it. So just, you know, someone that loves it as much as, as you'd want on the board that has a vision.
Randy Minchu, you're next on this particular question about, uh, appointing the library board members and criteria what you would look for.
Well, I've thought about this because as mayor, you, you appoint board members to a lot of different things. And so, um. As far as the library board goes, I think you'd wanna find some librarians. I think you'd wanna find some people who had worked in the library before. I know the, the library was important to me. I know y'all have a hard time believing it. There was no internet when I was a kid. So, um, I, I think the, I think the library, I think the Daniel Boone Library is, is part of the fabric of our, of our town. And so I, I, I hate to think that we would ever do without a library. And so I, I, I think we. I'd find community members who, who wanna step up and serve their community because of their experience in the library.
David Seaman, same question.
Tanya, I'm really interested in this pie that you've been. So in my capacity as, uh, as the chairman of the school boards policy committee, I have the opportunity to appoint. Members, citizen members to that committee. And what I look for are people who are experienced in policy initiatives. Uh, who take great pride in ensuring that there are equitable outcomes for all. And as mayor, as Randy said, I would ensure that for any board that I am looking at. And I am appointing people who have the experience within that sector, people who are, uh, who are looking to ensure that. Uh, all of our citizens and all of our employees within those areas are treated fairly and equitably. And people who have a, a long term vision for how those. How those utilities, in this case, the library, are going to impact our community for the next fifty years.
Barbara Buffalo, you get the same question about appointing library board members and what criteria?
Yeah, so specifically, um, for Daniel Boone Regional Library, I think it's gonna be important to represent the region that DBRL serves. So it can't just be city, um, those who live in the city of Columbia because the library has locations in other communities. And so having that representation so that all those voices are heard will be important for making the decisions. Um, it's also, it is always useful. So I started on a board of directors that recently grew, a small group. So it grew from like three to six. Really exciting. But we intentionally sought out, um, advice from others when selecting who to encourage to apply to be on the board. And I think that's something that we can do with boards and commissions as well as the regional library and think about, okay, well. Who in like neighborhoods or who within other stakeholders should we reach out to? And what do you wanna see in those board members? And then that will help you also recruit people from who you're talking to, to apply to it. So that's my approach.
We're gonna try to work in a whole lot of questions here, but I want to, uh, ask a question that I'll probably embarrass myself by asking. But it is my question and it's one that I don't think you've been asked before. And Randy Minchu, you're your first on this. So I drive around town and I see your campaign signs in yards. So my question is basically, how'd you decide on the font and the colors? Of the campaign site. Being a mayor is about decision making. I'm not totally being ridiculous here. I'm just curious as to what thought process and whose advice did you go to? To say, this is how I want myself represented in a yard sign.
Well, I wanted to have my picture on all of my signs and I got voted down on that. So that was really the only input I had. Our, our, uh. Our girl didn't like that. Our, uh.
I don't want my pictures.
I'm teasing. I, I didn't want mine either. So, um, we didn't, uh, I had the, the people that ran my campaign. Um, understand the strategy on fonts and what's written. And so I've proven before. I'm no good. I'll pick a font. Somebody, I can't even read that. So I, I, they didn't even let me in the room. Yeah, literally I saw the design after it was all done. I said, it looks great. They said, you're right. So. That's about how much I put into it.
Appreciate the answer. David Seaman, the same question to you. How'd you go about deciding on that, those kinds of issues?
Yeah, so we went through a, a very rigorous process. There was a focus group that included my two daughters. They are much more stylish than I am. So I value their opinion on those type of things. Um, I think our sign is blue and white because blue is my favorite color. So that makes sense. Um, but yeah, I took the design. We came up with a couple of designs and we literally showed them in front of my nine and five year old daughters and said, which one do you like? Big one? I said, that's cool.
I love it. Barbara Buffalo?
This question directed towards me.
No, it is not. I have a question for it all. And even if you were a part of this, I would have asked this question.
Okay. Um, so for mine, so first off, I chose the purple, um, because it's a unity color. And I felt that right now that's what Columbia really needs. Um, and why I chose, so this is the, again, I have very talented friends. So all of the artwork, all of the designs on those things are from my friend Mary Winn, who's a very talented graphic design artist. And I like to give her a shout out anytime I can because she doesn't like ever take any credit for anything and she's awesome. Um, and there's a buffalo on it because my last name is a buffalo. Like if I want people to remember, oh, hey, I remember that woman. Like she came by my door. She's the largest land at mass animal, you know, around. So that's what I'm looking for. So that's why I went with it, David.
Thank you. Tanya Heath, same question.
All right. Well, I'd also like to give a shout out to Adrian Luther. She's a former student of mine. She's also done the Flat Branch, uh, mural, if you all saw that this summer. And so when I was talking to Adrian, I said, you know, I really am someone who is friends with everybody. I want the red and the blue to signify that I want to represent everyone. I'm a person that's in the middle. And I also wanted the stars in there because I'm a very optimistic person. And so whether I tell my students or whether I tell our daughter, uh, my husband and I say shoot for the stars because we want excellence. So that's why the stars are there.
Thank you all for indulging me. I appreciate that.
David, can I get a minute here?
You can't take time away from me. This is important stuff we're talking about. David Seaman, you're next. We get back to, uh, questions that have been provided by audience members in one form or the other. Please address, um, okay, I'm, I'm supposed to ask each candidate your priorities for the ARPA funds.
And so I supported the, uh, the Fowler Thomas Resolution that was proposed. Now, we spend a hundred percent of our ARPA funds on, uh, social services that are necessary coming out of the pandemic. Half of that money is already spent. The four priorities that I would have are the opportunity center, a twenty-four seven behavioral crisis center. Workforce development programs so that we can get those jobs and, uh, and violence prevention programs. Because I think we've all understood that there is a large amount of violence that's been taking place in our city for decades, but we seem to ignore when it's not downtown. I would also be encouraged in ensuring that there is a robust democratic process. Amongst citizens to ensure that we are spending that money in a way that folks in town want to see it spent. Uh, and not just the same folks that show up to every city council meeting, every board meeting. Uh, that we are reaching out into the community to ensure that we are bringing everyone together to find out how we should spend this money.
Thank you. Barbara Buffalo, your answer to, um, your priorities for the ARPA funds.
Yeah, so in, uh, June of last year, city council set their four priority areas that they wanted to see. So workforce development, violence prevention, uh, behavioral crisis center and our, um. Explained, uh, homeless, the voluntary, thank you, the voluntary action centers, opportunity campus discussion. So it's a homeless shelter, you know, the drop in with full services. One of the things though, that I think I've been a little bit frustrated in, and I imagine some community members have been as well. Is that at that time, there was also the discussion about surveying for the remaining funds. And so, uh, city council asked staff to look at, what would you do? How do we survey people on this? That discussion happened again in September of, uh, twenty-one, where again, it was talked about, we're gonna do a robust survey with the community members. Asking where they wanna see the funds going. In February of this year, that was discussed again, like, oh, let's do a survey. We're gonna survey and see what people do. Thankfully, right now, our Public Health and Human Services, who I got to work with at the city when we did our Community Health Improvement Plan. And have a lot of talent and success at doing community surveys. They're leading the next process where it will take into account what do people wanna put in? And then that's how that we'll know to allocate the funds. So I support that.
Tanya Heath, your priorities for the ARPA funds?
Yes, so I, I actually got the idea of. Water mains from talking to someone in a neighborhood who had one of those backhoes in their front yard. And they were like, this is ridiculous. Our neighbor down the street, they had their pipes burst a couple of months ago. Now ours have burst. And they said, please, please, please bring up the water mains and bring up infrastructure and use that money to help all of us. And so then I went and I talked to, uh, a focus group that I had created as well as people from all neighborhoods all over the city. And they all said that they wanted infrastructure that benefited everyone. And so I would definitely do that. And then I would create a private public partnership, sort of like a, an inner tube. Where, um, for people that are unhoused, the, the nonprofits that are the experts are on the inside of the inner tube. And then the, um, faith organizations and volunteers are on the outside of the inner tube and the people that need, uh, either mental or, um. Uh, addiction help or any sort of help, they would have those resources and they would also, um, benefit, you know, from a community approach.
Thank you. Randy Minchu, your priorities for the ARPA funds?
Well, so I agree with the, uh, where the first twelve and a half, um, or, you know, twelve and a half million were allocated that the. Um, behavioral crisis center is something I've been working on, um, as a board member, the liaison to work with, with the, uh, folks at Burrell. To get the crisis center. So there's land that's been purchased. Um, I know there's a lot of frustration on, on. The team that's working on this, trying to get that money, uh, to, to be allocated, to get it, uh, to, to promise. So. Uh, I visited with the folks from Voluntary Action Center. I'm excited about the fact that we've got. A community organization that's willing to take on that project because the city really needs to resource. The city doesn't need to own a homeless shelter. And Ed Stansberry, um, I had coffee with him yesterday and I'm just. Excited about that, you know, the twelve million dollar project. So we're not giving him enough, but, um, it's, it's seed money for that. Um, and then as far as the other half goes, you know, one of the ideas that I've thought about was to go to the neighborhood associations and have a liaison on each neighborhood. Association that could work with each, um, oh, I'm sorry, I'm out of time.
We're gonna go to the next question and Barbara Buffalo gets to start this one. Will you commit to one hundred percent renewable power in the city of Columbia by? Twenty thirty?
Yeah, so that's a goal of the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. And many cities have this as a goal. And one of the things that's important when you're having this goal of a hundred percent renewable energy is to think about it multiple ways. So first off, you have to have, where are we gonna get our energy from and where are those opportunities? The second is to think about how we also can increase conservation, like there are man side management programs and efficiency in our built environment. Because, you know, you don't wanna put solar panels on a house with a bunch of like leaky windows and doors. Because then you're just having that, that big, more expensive energy go through. But the other thing that was really important when the Climate Action Adaptation Plan was developing that. Was to look into, to make sure that we have equitable systems in place so that there's not a rate increase for those that are already struggling to pay their utility bills. And so with that, looking at what other communities have done to address that and whether or not it's reviewing how utility rates are set for, um, income eligibility. One of the other things though, I think is important is that all those cities that do have a hundred percent renewable energy goal. Have a professional like staff that's doing the work and we need to make sure that our utility is up for the challenge.
We'll go to Tanya Heath, same question. Will you commit to one hundred percent renewable power for the city by twenty thirty?
I'm not sure that that is actually possible. And the other thing that I would do if I were mayor is I would get. Everyone at the table. So I would get the people that are the experts in sustainability. I would get the people that are, um. With the way that we've currently done it. I would get the other people who might have other ideas on how we should do things. Because I have family that live in Austin, Texas. And last winter, they all suffered. Luckily, my uncle is a, um, retired green bra. And so he was like, I got this covered. And, but I mean, you know, what would we all do without electricity and all that sort of stuff for five days? And I talked to an engineer and they said that the reason that they had so many issues was that when they did quote the green. Uh, energy part, they didn't do it with the depth that they should have. They skimmed on the top as far as how they did it. And that's why it didn't work the way that it should have. So research, research, research.
Randy Minchu, will you commit to one hundred percent renewable power in the city of Columbia by twenty thirty?
Uh, I have been on the record of saying, no, I wouldn't support that goal because we don't have the infrastructure. Um, in place for that. I've not seen a plan for how it would get done. So, uh, not to be. Political and just say yes to everything that everybody asks. To me, I don't see a realistic way for us to get there. We've got deferred infrastructure. We, we talked earlier, uh, with the other candidates about the power grid issues. Uh, I don't see how we would get there. Now, should we have a goal of getting to that point? Yes. Should we, can we do that by twenty thirty? I don't see how we could.
And, um, also on this question, David Seaman, about, uh, one hundred percent renewable power by twenty thirty?
Yes, so climate change is the, the issue of our time. It's one of those things that makes me wonder if I wanna have grandchildren or not. So I'm not sure what environment they'll be growing up in. So yes, I would commit to a hundred percent goal by twenty thirty. Um, and the caveat that I want to ensure that we are not seeking that goal on the backs of the most marginalized. We built the system that got us here on the, on their backs. We can't ask them to bear the brunt of that burden, clearly.
We'll start with, uh, Tanya Heath on this question. I'm gonna try to squeeze in at least two more from the audience and from the listeners. Both of the city emergency service departments that are referring to fire and police are finding it difficult to get to full staffing. What ideas do you have to make? are finding it difficult to get to full staffing, what ideas do you have to make these jobs more attractive?
So, as you probably have heard, Jefferson City is offering, uh, new police staff $10,000. And part of the ARPA funds are here, are for hazard pay, and so that would be 13,000 for the police and fire while they were here. And so that, that is something that, you know, I mean, we've got, it's a competitive market, we've gotta, we've gotta really look at what is, what are their options. The other thing that I have noticed is that basically, if you look at fire, police, trash, there's a lot of other jobs that basically the people are athletes doing this job. I don't understand why we don't have a physical therapist or a relationship with physical therapists, so that they can, uh, learn skills so that their bodies can keep doing the job. We have to think long term about the quality of the workers' life, as well as how we pay them.
Randy Minchu, I think you know what the question is, uh, what would you do to make our fire and police workers, um, those jobs more attractive?
Well, I think the key to, uh, what we're seeing now is we've got retention problems. Uh, we changed their, we changed the, the police department's, um, retirement plan after the 2008 crunch, the economic crunch, and we've not fixed that, and so if you're losing police officers faster than you can onboard them, and according to Jeff Jones, we get onboard about five police officers a year, we've lost 10 this year already. We have a retention problem as much as we do an attraction problem. Columbia used to be, the Columbia Police Department used to be the police department to work at. It's not that way now, because we changed their pay, we, 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 we need to change back. And then the other thing, uh, with our fire department, we're about 60% funded on their retirement, and we need to, that needs to be fully funded, those men and women are doing work that rest of us either physically couldn't or not willing to do, and to have them in an insecure situation like that, I think we're gonna have retention issues as well.
David Seaman, same question to you, please.
Yeah, I do believe this is a retention issue. Uh, we have some cultural issues within the department that need to be solved. And, I mean, cultural issues are what tends to have people leaving a job, the other is pay, we can try to, we can look at increasing pay. There's a caveat there, in that we can hire more officers, we need them, there's only 14 on the street at a time, there's only 14 police officers on the street for 130,000 people right now. But if you're asking some folks in this community how comfortable they are adding more police officers to an department that continues to be told that you are pulling black drivers over downtown at a disproportionate rate by our Attorney General, they're going to have an issue with that. If you've never stood on the side of a high, a dark highway with your hands split out in a submissive manner, with an officer standing in front of you with a weapon drawn, as I have, you may not understand that. That's okay. We do need more officers, but we have to ensure that the culture within the department is changed first. A canning good conscience, black man, a black father, a black brother, introduce more officers into that culture without it being changed first.
Barbara Buffalo, the question to you about, um, making fire and police jobs more attractive.
Yeah, so in addition to the things that I've said, one of the other things that we see in both in our public safety, but then also in other city departments, is, yeah, the lack of workforce potential, people interested in these positions. Um, you know, when I worked for the city, I got to the midpoint 10 years after working for the city, the, the range of the salaries that we have. And so I think having that sort of, they're doing a classification and compensation study right now, that will look at addressing those gaps where people are not getting paid in comparison to our peers in Fulton and Jefferson City. So that'll be a big part for getting it. But the other thing is about this idea of like what Columbia Public Schools is, grow your own, right? So starting now with our, with, with the youth, and talking about these potentials of jobs in the city, and that this is a good place to work, pensions are good, you've got, you've got the staff there that will support. So both supporting from the staff side on the retention and then increasing the employee engagement, but then also starting to show these as opportunities, where, you know, you can go into a trade school, or you can come work for the city in internship, and then grow your own for there as a potential.
May I go on for a little bit more? Oh, no. I'm gonna shorten this up really, I mean, you all shortened it up, because I just think this is one of the last times you'll be asked as a candidate to answer this question. What changes do you think need to be made to improve the current trash collection system? Let's, uh, keep it as short as you can, because I would like to ask one or two final questions. Who's first? Randy, I'm sorry, you're first.
Okay, so I have been on the record for saying that I would do what the, the solid waste, uh, department folks suggested to do, and that is, well, first, let me say this, the goal is to collect everyone's trash at the edge of their property once a week. Whatever vessel you do it in, we're gonna get a chance to vote on that, I think, August 2nd. Whatever vessel that is, we can have that conversation, whether it's a bag or a roll card. The solid waste department suggested that we do five bags for every household, no logos, put a weight lemon on it, no more couches, refrigerators. That's what I would suggest that we go back to, I would hope I could get the current city council on board with, um, standing down on the logo bag mandate, because I don't think that system has worked, it's frustrated people while we're out knocking doors. That's the number one comment that we get, that they do not like the logo bags.
David Seaman, same question, what would you do to improve the current trash collection system?
Roll cards with different sizes for different sized homes, different communities and neighborhoods, and exceptions for our, our neighbors with disabilities and senior citizens, so that if they need to continue to use bags, they can. Sure answer.
Bless you. Barbara Buffalo, you're saying, same question, and your answer, please.
And, well, sorry, I'm gonna talk a little longer, because in 2015, I got to go on a road show. Every single ward, I got to go and talk about trash, and David Lyle was the moderator, and he put me through the ropes with this. Every ward, my whole life, my husband actually said, you're no longer allowed to talk about trash at dinner parties. And I was like, I want to. So, the city of Columbia proposed to council in August of 2015 their options, because they knew that they had 79% turnover of residential trash collection alone, and $350,000 in annual workman's comp claims, where people are getting hurt, so they go to 900 homes a day. And we knew we had, um, abysmal recycling rates, we were recycling at a lower rate than Jefferson City. As a sustainability manager, time that hurt me. So we came to those options, and council chose not to make any changes to anything. And in those options were the idea of looking at how, if we went to automated collection, could we do a variety of sizes? Could we think about what's gonna work in different communities? I live in East Campus, so I understand small, smaller places where there's not driveways at every house, you have to have a hybrid system. So I think we're at that place now, where we're gonna have to come up with a new system, so people aren't getting hurt, and David Lyle?
I, I remember, I remember those ward meetings, and I think it was Carl's Ward, and I celebrated my 60th birthday at that meeting.
80% of those folks did not want roll cards at that time, I'd still be hanging from a tree.
Tanya Heath, we have to move on, your, your answer to the question about what you'd do to improve the current trash collection system.
All right, so overall, I would keep the landfill, I would keep our employees picking up trash, I would not privatize it. Three, I would shorten the hiring time from when people apply to when they're hired, right now it's over 60 days, no wonder we're having a, uh, employee issue. Uh, number four is the donut approach. The donut approach is that we've already voted twice that people like trash bags. So the inside of the city, where we currently have trash bags, they get to keep trash bags, and it's like three or four trash bags, depending on what the employees say, the outside of the city, where it's new development, that will be roll cards, because they can make the driveways and everything adequate for that, so you're not on a hill. Um, and number five, automatic leaf truck, that's what they do in St. Louis, hello. So you just put all your leaves out, the truck comes and scrunches them all up, it is good for the environment, and it's good, it's better than, um, 10 bags of leaves, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna do really quick here, just because I really think that you all deserve this question. I don't know how many forums you've done. 13, and you've got one after tonight? Two after tonight. David Seaman, you're first on this one, would you suggest anything to change the campaign process that we put the candidates through?
Please consolidate your forms. That, that, we, I think we all can agree that each forum is important, and there are a lot of questions that are asked. But a lot of times, the same question is asked. If you could figure out how to consolidate just a couple of, and lower the number, it would be so helpful. We have three kids at home. I love coming to talk to these folks, I really do. And if we can solve this on those forums, it'll be helpful.
And the rest of you candidates, if you wanna just say amen or something like that, that's fine, but Barbara, do you have anything to add to that? Consolidate forums, Tanya?
I would also ask more interesting questions, because I think that we have covered all these questions, and so I would ask character questions. Like, what would you do if, and then put us on the spot?
I have several questions that I thought these have not been asked, but I have to respect the organization and the listeners and the participants. And, you know, it's like radio, you've said something or advertised 500 times, and you think everybody's gotta have that message by now, but lo and behold, I was with a good friend of mine two weeks ago, and I said, who do you think, uh, would make a good mayor, and he said, who's running? They don't know the answers to all these questions, Randy, you're thought about what I asked.
The only thing that I would say, um, and not just to be disagreeable, but sometimes I am, the, um, we do get to meet a lot of people, even though we're getting asked the same four questions over and over and over again. Uh, tonight, we, you know,
Hey, the same question was different.
No, no, we've, we've been asked, we've been asked some questions, I didn't say great, we've been asked some questions. I just think that, uh, the, the before the meeting and the after meeting interaction with those different groups, uh, I have learned some things, I've, I've had to eat my words on a couple of things, we got a, uh, forum, and I thought, man, I wish I'd never said something when the thing, when we first started campaigning, so I think that interaction is good. You know, I, I have had to miss some, because we've had other events, so we do have the opportunity to say no. We would never do that to the League of Women Voters, just so y'all know.
All right, I'll ask you a question that you haven't been asking for, and I, and it's quick, you can just give me a quick answer, right, not even 10 seconds. If I were to answer this question, I would say Cheesecake Factory, what would you like to see in Columbia that is not here right now? Barbara, you're first.
I, I would like a Texas barbecue.
Okay, Randy?
Um, the, uh, gosh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, um, the restaurant that's in Jeff City, that's in the, the building, that was, Big Whiskey. Big Whiskey is a great, uh, great restaurant.
David Seaman?
If you've ever been to the South, you know what Bojangles Chicken is.
Yeah, mine's a totally nerdy one, though, so there's this really cool food, food, uh, food co-op that is in Colorado, and I would do a really cool food co-op, co-op.
We need to do closing statements, Tanya Heath, your first 60 seconds to wrap it up tonight.
All right, thank you, so again, it's heathformayor.com. I am all about common sense and collaboration. After the pandemic, I believe four things came forward, which is people want a purpose in their life, they wanna say in what happens in their life, they want security, and they want joy. I believe that we can work together to make sure that if we are Columbia, that each part of Columbia has the resources it needs, sort of like a body. You would never say, oh, I don't care about feet, I only care about hands. I would be a mayor that would care for the whole body of Columbia, to make sure that everyone gets the resources that they need. The other thing is, is I hope people seriously are judging us by our ideas, and not how much we have fundraised, because David and I could have raised a lot of money if we wanted to, but we did it a different way. And so that's great that they did raise the money, but please vote for us based on our ideas, thank you.
Barbara Buffalo, your closing minute, please.
Yeah, I'd say that right now, what we need, um, is a leader who can bring people together, and also know, know how the ins and outs of the city works. Um, so I've been proud on this campaign and all the conversations I've had at all the forums and with all the different groups, to gain the trust and the endorsement from everything, from the Sierra Club to the Columbia Board of Realtors, and also our local labor unions. And I think what that's showing is that sort of consensus and where we need to be, because we know we need to think about the future for Columbia, and designing that future so it works for all of us. And as the mom of two little buffaloes, I want Columbia to be just as special and as awesome for them as it has been for me and my husband.
David Seaman, your closing minute, please.
So, so again, I wanna thank you all for showing up, thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on, thank you for the library for hosting, and again, thank you David Lyle for taking time out of your retirement. You're an amazing man for doing that, I applaud you. I would tell you all that in two weeks, we're going to be electing a mayor, we're electing ward representatives, and we're electing schoolward members. I would ask you to vote out of fear for an outcome, but out of the, the hope that the promise that this city is, is available to each of us. Like I said before, I, I don't think we're being asked to do things for the greater good, we're being asked to do things for the status quo. And for some of us, the status quo is not acceptable. Oh, on April 5th, I hope you vote for me, but I also hope you vote simply because you believe in what we're talking about.
Randy Minchu, your final 60 second comments, please.
Well, again, we appreciate, um, the League of Women Voters for putting this on every year, and, um, thank you for, for letting me be a part of it. Um, you know, um, I would say, I would also, uh, echo the comments about fundraising, uh, if some of us did raise a lot of money, uh, because we're serious about the campaign, I don't wanna, I don't, I would hate to be judged, because I raised more money than someone else, so to me, the money has nothing to do with it, it is everything to do with people going out and voting. I think you could see by the way we've put our campaign on, when I do something, I do it seriously. I'm serious about what we'd like to see done. Uh, most of what I've talked about are infrastructure, um, things that need to be, um, done, the deferred infrastructure. I, I, I like the diversity of Columbia, I, I like the idea of bringing everybody together, but let's be honest, that's why we have all these individual forums, is because everybody's different, everybody wants to do things the way they wanna do them, I celebrate that. Please vote on April 5th, um, and vote for me if you'd like to see what I have brought forward, um, become reality.
I wanna just close with something that, um, we just received this from two of the Zoom participants, and this is addressed to you all. Thanks to the candidates for being civil. Um, unlike national politicians, each treated the others with respect, and they said in all caps, "Thank you." And another would just add, and thanks to all the candidates, the League of Women Voters, Daniel Boone, Regional Library, and you will be able to see a digital voter guide available on the League of Women Voters website, which is LWBCBC dot org. And you all know that the election is the 5th, so please vote, thanks to KFRU and KOPN, and Tom Holmes back there who ran the engineering for at least one of those radio stations, we appreciate that. Thank you all for being here, and have a good night.